WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equahous and Leader Member FDIC.
This Fintress County Board of Commission meeting is called to order. Please rise for the presentation of callers by Clark Range High School color guard. That will be followed by the pledge to the flag by Commissioner Larry Cooper and opening prayer by Fifth District Commissioner Wade Matthews.
Forward, march. Color guard, vote. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to reverse, march. Forward, march. Color guard, vote. Order, colors. Order, arms. Pull out.
Lay your heads please. Most county gracious heavenly father, we come before you in prayer tonight, Lord. Lord, we ask you to watch over this meeting, Lord. Just give us the wisdom, Lord, to make the best decisions for our county, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us here, Lord. And just, just be with our country, Lord. Lord, just be with all the sick and afflicted in our community and just be with the city mayor, Lord, diagnosed with cancer and all those others that have cancer, Lord. Lord, just, just watch over us and help us to be a light to other people in our state, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
We'll have roll call by Marilyn Stevens, our county court clerk.
Here.
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 We do have a quorum. First thing on the business is approval of notaries. We have Matthew, Justin Brown, Angie Ray Starr, and Tabby S. Cook. What are your wishes?
Luke approved.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call, vote please.
Four.
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 That motion carries. Next is approval of minutes from July 17, 2017. So everybody had a chance to look over the minutes, any changes, additions, deletions?
Need to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call, vote please.
Four.
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 Okay, motion carries. Looking around the courtroom, the next thing we got on our agenda is proclamation recognition of 11 and 12-year-old Fintress County Cow Ripken League accomplishments. I'm wondering if we've not contacted, do we have anybody representing that team?
I'll make the motion, we move it to next month.
Move it to next month. Do we even need a motion?
No.
We'll just postpone that till next month to go on. Next on our list is quarterly report from the ID Board from Manager Scott Sandman. Scott, go on up.
Good evening, everyone. Want to make a brief report, Mike told me I wouldn't have much time.
Exactly.
One of the things I've got for you is just a summary of the ID Board. One of our new members, Larry there staple and a single. One of our members said that we need to, you know, make more evident is for what is the ID Board charged with and responsible for, and they wanted me to read the mission statement of the industrial board. This was developed back in 2000 when there was a reorganization of the ID Board. The Fintress County Industrial Development Board is organized, is an organization formed by the Fintress County Commission, is made up of individuals appointed by the commission. We serve to actively support and promote economic development in the Fintress County. And then it talks about what are, what are we supposed to be doing, what is the board responsible for, just briefly, recruit industry into the county, to serve as a resource to identify and attract potential investors in the community, communicate the importance of economic developments in Fintress County, and then to assist in retaining growth of existing industry. So that's some of the things that we've been charged with and worked diligently to do. Next page in your report is a summary of the RFPs and RFIs that we've received this year. This has been really the busiest year I've ever seen. I've been working in this in Fintress County for about 20 years and to this point this year, we've reviewed 24 different proposals for companies locating in Tennessee. Of those 24, we've been able to submit six to be considered matching up. It's a matching process. We've been able to submit for six of these projects. It's a brief summary of each of the projects, what they were looking for, what the drivers were, primarily the ones we've been able to submit for are greenfield projects where they're looking for lots anywhere from 10 to 15 acres in size, up to acres, you know, up to maybe 50 to 60 acres. So we've been able to submit those. There were two of these that we weren't able to submit where they were seeking spec buildings that were already developed and something they could expand from. So that's just a summary of those. As far as things that have been accomplished on the site development side, international drive in the Clark Range Regional Business Park, extension has been completed. We submitted an invest prep grant to TBA to clear the remaining woodlands out there, which is about 160 acres, and to develop a pad ready site. That grant was not funded. The Tennessee Economic Development Department has site development grants that we submitted a round three grant for, which we received a half million dollars, and that's to upgrade a water line serving the park. We've recently completed a right-of-way survey of the road that was built by TDOT. Their contract said that once the road is complete, it will transfer back from state ownership to the county. We're currently working on updating the master plan. The road design impacted some of the lot layouts, we're getting updated mapping done on that. And we're also working on a pad ready site that would allow us a 50,000 square foot pad on a 100,000 square foot graded site. On the back page of that page is some of the marketing efforts that have been done. We continue to participate in the TBA Target Market Specialist Showcase. That's a chance where we represent Fintress County in our sites to TBA and their folks that are working with companies located in the TBA region. So we were able to do that. We've run several ads and some national publications, Site Selection Magazine. We're continuing to update our website. Participated in the TBA Economic Development Forum, which is an opportunity to meet with site consultants that work in Tennessee and work with TBA. We've developed some new drone footage of the park showing its completed state. And then one thing I failed to put on there is we've joined the Tennessee Economic Development Partnership, which is a marketing organization that markets the state of Tennessee. It's sort of a pay-to-play type thing where you have to pay dues to be a member of this, and then you're invited to meet with site consultants, go on trade trips to towns like Chicago, call on industry, that type of thing. So we're just getting involved with that. Couple other high points here on the report. We received a $2,500 grant from TBA for participating in their target market showcase. We hosted the Tennessee Department of Economic Development Commissioner here back last fall. Actually, that was in July of last year. We've got a new TBA representative we brought, heard of Fintress County, and showed her around Fintress County, showed her industrial properties and buildings. We'll be sponsoring Manufacturing Day at first Friday in October, which recognizes our local manufacturers and hopefully highlights careers in manufacturing. We have some ID Board vacancies that we need to work with you guys to fill before too long. And then just briefly, Highway 127 continues to move forward with funding of the first section over in Cumberland County slated for funding next year's budget year, and then the section across Clear Creek is to be funded in 2020. So those are moving forward. Two other things to mention, we just had a commuter study done by TBA's economic development people. They have economists that work there, and you should, there should be a map in there that talks about where do the people in Fintress County work. Their data shows that about 35% of Fintress Countyans drive out of the county to work. The largest employer is Cumberland County. They employ about 205 Fintress Countyans. We have about 407 that drive to Putnam County every day, 128 go to Morton County and 125 to Scott County. We have 150 that commute all the way to Knoxville on a daily basis. So this just shows sort of where the people of Fintress County work. Our workforce altogether is about 6,000 people out of our population of about 18,000. So those others are retired or not of working age. That labor market is 18 to 65, so that's what the 6,000 represents. And then the last thing we should have is a proposal. It's a one-pager, and this is something we're working on with the upper Cumberland Development District. They have sent us a proposal to help us come in and do some strategic planning for Fintress County in the lines of economic development. Last time we did any strategic planning as a county-wide effort, I think was back in 2000, we came out with the Fintress 2020 Plan, and probably needs to be updated and looked at again. So this is something we're working towards. The board will be working, hopefully, with the Chamber of Commerce and talk to LeAnn about it. They're interested in participating in this. It'll take everybody, the county commissions, the city councils, our planning commissions, all to make this a worthwhile endeavor, and hopefully what it'll do is help everybody come to consensus on what we need to do, which way we need to head. So that's something we plan to undertake later this fall, and it'll take about six months to complete that. So that in a nutshell is it.
Appreciate it, Scott. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, Mike. Good evening.
Following up with what Scott was talking about with some ID Board appointments, I do have two appointments to present for the commission tonight. LeAnn Smith, Director of the Chamber of Commerce, obviously with, with her position and, I think she would bring a great deal to the ID Board. And the other one is Edgar Parker, who is CEO of Parker Charcoal, local company here in the county that employs 20-something workers and has a probably between a $6 and $7 million budget a year and, and pretty good impact on Fintress County. So I would put those two forward and I have a recommendation.
Make a motion to appoint.
Second. Got a motion and a second to appoint, any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
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 10-4 and none against, motion passes. Scott, if you would maybe call Amanda sometime tomorrow, she can get you contact information for those new board members. And, you know, you and I might get together and discuss the rest of the board, whatever we need to do. No problem. Okay, number 11, consideration of reconfirming the terms of the Fintress County Audit Committee. I think there was some doubt before, and I think Amanda's got that into your package. That should clarify those positions and the time limits. Any discussion, questions? I ought to entertain a motion to approve this. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Pass.
Four.
Four.
Pass.
Four.
Again.
Wait.
Against.
Yes. I think it was 6-2 and 2, wasn't it?
6-2 and 2, but passes.
6-2 and 2, motion passes. Next is a consideration of appointment of Sheriff Michael Reagan to the E-911 Board to fill the remaining term of the previous sure, and this appointed term will expire on October 2018.
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next, consideration of approval of the updated sheriff's office and officer policy and procedures manual. Leslie, you want to talk about that? Everybody can see that, it's about 400 pages long. Sheriff, if you want to step down and to the mic.
I'm reading. I've got the policy and procedure. I've done been through it, the tech has been through it. I've done signed off on it. If you all would look at it, pass it for me, whatever, it'll be in the effect that this will be the possible procedure to Sheriff's Department for the deputies. There is another policy for the corrections officers that I've not been through yet, but I'm sure that it'll probably, it was under whenever Candy was there, and I'm sure it will still be the same.
We do have copies in my office for anybody that wants to take that and review it.
And I've looked at both of them. This policy is incredibly standard, it mirrors Auburn County and Pickett County. I think there's a few additions for different things that are, we may have a different holiday or something, but it's fine, it needs to be approved. We've waited three years, we got it in three weeks, I think that's pretty good. I will say this, there was one thing that you and Marcia made the clock time, y'all have to sit down and talk about that, and that may be an addition as we go along, something that just comes up that we don't necessarily have in there. But for the deputies to look at today, that will be a really good manual for them. You'll give it out to everybody and make them sign their receipt, correct?
Got it.
And as far as the jail corrections policy, it's the same one that Tennessee Department of Corrections required us to pass before they opened the doors. Can't change it much, as they said, here it is. Have a nice day. So once Sheriff Reagan has signed off on that, we'll sign an updated copy just with his name, but it's an identical policy.
I made a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
A second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Per county attorney's approval, recommendation?
I read it, I read the sign off once you all are good with it. But we need to be sure we approve both the deputy's portion he's got and then the TCI manual that's on file already. Just reaffirm that under this.
I amend my motion to accept.
And the second as well?
Yes.
Motion and second to accept and adopt both. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
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 Thanks, Sheriff. Next is consideration of the NIMs policy, compliance policy for the Fintress County Volunteer Fire Department. Laurie, I'll let you explain that in a moment. I know that you and I met with our fire chiefs about NIMs complacency, and it's something I think we're going to have to do, and there's a letter there from my office giving an executive order to, to become compliant with all volunteer fire departments.
The NIMs compliance is something that we should have been doing for quite some time. It's a federal law that says that we have to, when we go out on a call, we're supposed to do incident command. If, God forbid, anybody ever got hurt, the first thing when they come and investigate that is going to say, who's the incident commander? And if you don't have one, then who was watching over these guys? And there is a fun that, you know, if a fireman does get killed in the line of duty, there's a fun that, you know, come to his spouse or her spouse, whichever it may be. This is just something that we've got to get in place, and, and we've met with the fire chief and assistant chief, and they said this, as soon as we pass it, they would make sure that every fire department is adhered to. So I move that we accept this.
I'll say it.
You have a question, Jeff?
Laurie, tell us again what NIMs.
NIMs, National Incident Management System.
Any other questions, discussions? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
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 10-4 and none against, motion passes. Next, approval of the highway department inventory list. You've got that list in front of you, and I've signed off on it with the highway department.
Move to accept.
I have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Four.
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 The motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of the proposal for the courthouse beautification project and/or slash landscaping. And this is the last of that project, hopefully to be finished by Halloween on the Square. I think, as a matter of fact, if you all approve this one, we need to make sure we specify that with the builder that that's to be completed by that date.
Was this not in the original bid?
What was that, Lester?
This, this work was bid on now, was it not, on the original bid, the contract?
This is, this is finished up, putting a new line of rock, the big gravel, the stamped concrete with the composite in it and all that.
Is there any way we can contact Mr. Hill and ask him about the new lawn part? The new lawn part and the claiming of it was in the original contract.
You're talking about up top?
Yep, up top, yep. It's, yeah, it's.
I think where the confusion comes in, I'm looking at the original plans that he brought in. He has a set of plans on 10-18, you know, that has what DB says, but there's future new lawn area, draining and drafts, NIB provide positive drainage, and then the new concrete walkway with WWF, I didn't my clue very close what that is, and turned down fences are not in the contract. Talking and sealing water tight after pouring, then sidewalks not in the contract, so that was breaking it up in a different contract. Then he has a section on some drawings that were laid on 10-31, 2016, that does have that, and that's what's attached to the contract Amanda has on file in her office. So I'm just not sure if there's some confusion there as to the draft and what the original was up there. Just need to get clarification from Allen on that. And I could probably give him on the phone if y'all want to pass that and come back to it, would that be okay?
We'll just skip it and come back to it.
I think we need to get that clarified for you to try to do anything.
If you're confused, I'm sure we will.
Okay, we'll, we'll skip that one and go on down to the consideration of resolution 2017-20 allowing the submission of the used oil collection grant for fiscal year 2017 and 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call, vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
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 10-4 and none against, motion passes. Number 19, consideration of declaration to purchase emergency equipment for the Fintress County Solid Waste Department.
That much money we talked about?
That's, that was going to be Michael, if he doesn't have the man on here.
He's not having a man.
Is it a new backhoe, is that what it's, it's just to be repaired?
Yeah.
Says on here, I will attach the quote with this letter.
Well, there it is.
Yeah, it's on the back of it. There's an old quote, price on it.
You want to put that off for next month to get a clarification?
He's going to have to rent, keep renting this backhoe for $695 a week until we.
For $2,100 a month.
Yeah. Is Marcia over there? Do you remember when he said that price?
It'd probably be a good idea first to know how much the.
Did you try to get him, Marcia?
I'll text him, move on to the next one.
Take notice in here. Yeah.
Right now? Ms. Kimberly Davidson is going to have to leave. Her daughter's in a pageant. She's in like a baking contest or something, Kim?
Tonight I've got to be mama, so I've got to go take care of my daughter, so most of what we have left on the agenda is budget items, and we've already sat through the finance and the budget meetings, and I've been involved in all parts of that. So I feel confident in leaving, and I appreciate y'all excusing me tonight.
Good luck.
Thank you.
She'll be judging the pickle contest.
Good luck, Kim.
I hope she can get out. Before we get into the budget items. Before we get into the budget items, uh, Kelly Kiesler, our representative back there, Kelly, would you like to come up? And I apologize for keep you waiting. I was trying to get through as much stuff with, uh, Kim as, as we could before she had to leave.
Uh, not a problem, Mayor. I just appreciate, uh, the mayor allowing me an 11th hour. I've got five there, Larry, and I'll give... Jim. I'll start here, you either start there, sir. Uh... I wanna get it later.
Yeah, I can, I can, I absolutely...
And the Prius, Prius, I've got, there's two copies.
I, I'm cognizant of the time, so, uh, I want, as, as Mr. Sandman came up to the mic, you gave him, I think, what did he give you?
I gave him three minutes.
Scott's already gone, what'd you give him, five minutes?
Three.
Three, oh, three. Wow. That'll be, that'll be tough for me, you know me. Hey, listen though, I do wanna, uh...
I thought if I gave you three, you'd take no more than ten.
I love you, thank you so much. Appreciate y'all allowing me to be here. It's post-session. Session concluded, uh, you know, mid-May. So here we are, uh, as we, again, as we term it, post-session, and that gives us, House members as well as Senate members, an opportunity, if we want to, those that want to, I do, to take time to be at, uh, their respective commission meetings, uh, city councils, school boards, et cetera. Now, in our case, we are, uh, we serve the, we have the only, uh, House seat down there, just as a quick reminder, that is, is of five counties. Of course, we have four and a half, but, uh, of course, Representative Wendell and I share Fentress. But that doesn't stop me from being here and being able to, uh, to drop some things off to you. And, uh, so anyway, we got, uh, you know, we stay real busy. Most, most everybody meets monthly, so that takes us right on up to the first of the year, just as hard as we can go to get, uh, to get around and to seeing everybody and just bringing you an overview, uh, of what we, uh, of the things that went, went on during session. Now, before I get in quickly to the packet and, and my quick three-minute present, two-minute presentation now, I guess, I wanna turn around and, and recognize Rod, Pastor Roger Burr, uh, Mr. Rod Williams. These two guys have been down there and visited us on the House floor, as well as your mayor and, and, and some others of you all. And let me encourage you, one, one session begins in January, I think, January the ninth, please give us a call. We would love y'all to, to come down. We're allowed, uh, two, uh, guests per day on the House floor and it would just tickle us to death. And the best part about the whole deal is, following the session, I feed you, don't I? I feed you. So that's worth the drive to Nashville after all. But quick overview, this makes the second year in a row that our state has not taken on any new debt. Did you know that? Isn't that remarkable? We haven't borrowed one penny for any major, uh, construction, period. Since January 11, there's been an increase of over 365,000 net new private sector jobs, uh, ladies and gentlemen across the state. Since 2011, we've passed tort reform, we've overhauled the workers' comp, and today more Tennesseans have a job than in any other point in our state's history. Proven that, you know, what was it, just two, three weeks ago, the, uh, you know, the big announcement out of Nashville, three, now we're, we're three-point whatever percent, it's unbelievable. First time in our state's history. Over the past seven years, the administration and the General Assembly, we've got, uh, three times as much in taxes than in any other, um, than in any other year in our state's history. Quickly underneath that, some examples, we phased out the inheritance ta- inheritance tax or death tax, if you will. We've eliminated the gift tax. Over the next four years, we're gonna completely phase out the hall tax. We've reduced, uh, sales tax on food. We've cut the property tax for our veterans, disabled and elderly. We've lowered the franchise and excise tax to recruit new industry in Tennessee, and we are and have the lowest debt per capita of any of the 50 states. I repeat, we have the lowest debt of any of this, uh, uh, of, of the other 49 states. It's just remarkable. And again, I, well, I'm not patting myself on the back, I'm just, you know, I, I, I'll tell you, I've, I've had, you know, my ups and downs with, with Governor Haslam, and when it comes down to it, I mean, it's usually, and, and Mayor, uh, Mayor knows this, uh, you know, most time it, it's rural versus urban issues. So, uh, but you know, the guy and his administration, yeah, I, gosh bum, you, you can't do anything but give them an A, uh, for their, uh, for their great work when it comes to, uh, you know, to, to economically our state. The first handout that you will find is this, and I thought this would be pretty informative. This is directly from our, uh, you'll see down in the southeast corner of, uh, of the front page, from the Comptroller's Office, direct from the Comptroller's Office. This gives you the, uh, an overall view of just what our, uh, our fiscal year, our budget that we're in right now is just over 37 billion, some, you know, is that a good thing, bad thing? Well, folks, I always tell you, it's, I guess it's a pretty darn good thing because our revenues, just June alone, and this is just one quick example, the revenues are just incredible. June alone, we, uh, the latest number, we, we were over $59 million above what we had projected, above what we had projected. It just keeps going on and on. Pages two, right on through three, you'll see that our revenues, um, uh, the biggest portion of, of our revenues, of course, that's on page three. It, it comes from, uh, from sales tax, et cetera. Federal government comes in at number two. Oh, how I wish that we didn't have to mess with those folks and we, we didn't, you know, we could do it alone, but, you know, for the time being, we've got, we gotta, we have to rely on them. The next, uh, the next page, you'll see this one right here, what's our big, biggest expense? Yeah, you got it. You guessed it, tin care, healthcare. So, anyway. The next piece is this one. Unfortunately, I couldn't provide you with a, with a colored one like that, they only gave us colored. So I had to, yours is black and white, but you'll see also where my finger is. Again, this is direct from the Comptroller's Office. The biggie for this year was the Improve Act. Now, this down here in the southwest corner shows you just what one penny generates when it comes to gas and diesel. But so many, and, and again, a reminder here, these numbers are, are factual. The governor doesn't appoint the comptroller. The comptroller, the treasurer, and secretary of state are, are our three constitutional, officers, elected by both the House and the Senate. So I'm just saying that to make sure or, or just to stress that these numbers, governor didn't have a thing to, to, to put these numbers and this information together. This, this is, this is actual factual stuff. And it, and it gives you a pretty darn good overview. The Improve Act did have, it was debatable. There was a lot of debate down there, uh, on the House floor, not much on the Senate. It passed through rather handedly. But there's a lot of misunderstandings and a lot of misinformation about that. Now, this next handout, you may not recognize the photo on this cover, but this lady is, is a colleague of mine and John Mark Wendell's, Susan Lynn, who took the time, had the time. She only represents one, one county, Wilson. But she had the time and I, and I commend her for this, she did a, a marvelous job. She put together a Q and A, question and answers regarding the Improve Act. And just take the, you know, again, take time to read this and, and you'll understand why that there was just so much misinformation a- as this went down. And folks, I'll tell you, and the word's out, I don't, I mean, you know, it is, it is what it is. But I think I'm eight, I think we have eight who represent the, uh, upper Cumberland area, House members. Eight House members. It was challenging. It was a challenging vote for all of us. And I'm saying, I'm not saying this braggingly or boasting I'm not on my soapbox, but I'm the only one that voted for it. And I'll tell you why I did. Next page, next handout. This gives you, this gives you a, a list of how this is going to affect Fentress County. For that matter, all of our counties. Now, if you go west, young man, Macon and Clay, they're pretty darn, you know, they're in pretty darn good shape from a state road standpoint. And bridge, that matter. But this piece of legislation was not just about new construction, it was about bridges as well. We got 962 projects that are needing immediate attention. Again, both bridges, right up at the very top, you will see, Fentress. And yes, this is the portion from the foot of the mountain, as we call it, to static. 10 million ain't gonna get us a new road. No, it won't. But what it will do is, it's going to, uh, they're gonna get down there, uh, as soon as they can get equipment and get this project bid and, and get the dozers down there, we're gonna try, Mayor, to get us about three or four of those worst curves to static, straightened out, as well as some more additional signage. Now, I do, and I appreciate you, I wanna also acknowledge the fact that I am in receipt of, of your, um, help me fill in the blank, your resolution, wasn't it, about a runoff ramp for, for big trucks? And I, and I appreciate that. And we're gonna, we'll try to, we'll try to do something about that, but I don't want that included in this 10 million. Let's, let's, you know, let's do an addendum to that project or something to get this in because we're gonna need every penny of that 10 million. But you can see, we also got bridges now. Also on the back of that, you will, you'll see where, how it's going to affect us, Jamestown, Allard, as well as Fentress County on the back, from a revenue side. May, Fentress County came in resoundingly, 3.7%, unbelievable unemployment. Now, in June, you jumped up to 5.2, but, you know, that's okay. We're still, uh, uh, as a county and a community, we're, we're still right in there and, and doing very well. And then finally, I thought I'd add some color to this presentation. You will find maps. You'll find a Senate, uh, map of our state, uh, illustrating the Senate districts, another map illustrating our House, different House districts, and then finally, uh, a congressional, state identifying our congressional, with their demographics, I might add, uh, attached to that. Mayor, on that note, I'm going to pass around these high-dollar, expensive legislative pens, I'm gonna drop this group over there, that group over there, and excuse myself because you know, ladies and gentlemen, I have a grandson who is just north of here on the York football field, and he is, he is suited up for York, uh, the, uh, Crush, what do they call that? And he's playing. I need to go and watch him. The kickoff was at 6:30.
You could've been out of here 15 minutes ago.
Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me to serve you. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Did you get those at the 127 sale?
No, seriously, these came from the legislature.
Thank you, Kelly. Laurie, I think you've got some information back on the, uh, the equipment for the solid waste?
Whoop, she said timeout.
Alan Bill, all the bums, can explain this in 10 seconds if you all want to go back to that at some point?
Well, we can, if you wanna put him on right now. You may have to put him, get one of those microphones.
This is Alan.
Alan?
Yes?
It's Leslie, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just clarified with you, I think what a couple of the commissioners issue had been is that on the revised 10-31-16, y'all remember we had to rebid this? We, we bid it out in early October, wasn't what we wanted. You came in and revised the RFP, we got additional bids. The contract documents are the 10-31 contract documents of 2016, and on page A2, it indicated a new future lawn area, earthwork and grading is in the contract, grass and seed are not in the contract, provide positive drainage. I think what some of the commissioners concerned was, is that in your new RFP on 8/2 of 17, revised date 10 of 17, is that the, uh, section H for that same section I just read you from 10-31 of 16, says fill with topsoil, and then of course provide lime, fertilizer, seed straw. We, we know that was not anticipated in the original 10-31 contract, but explain to us what H, fill with topsoil, and A2's, uh, earthwork and grading, if there's any difference in those two?
As I better, my recollection is that the intent of the, of the October, uh, project was to do the subsoil fill behind the retaining wall and do some, uh, do some rough grading just so there wouldn't be standing water. And then the landscaping part included the topsoil in establishing a level lawn area that could be mowed and maintained in the future. So the, the difference would be that the earlier bid was for subsoil, the later bid was for the actual landscaping and the, um, that the idea was that the person that was placing the topsoil would also be responsible for establishing a stand of grass on the topsoil. So that was one combined, uh, part of work.
Are they two different things, two different projects, two different sections of a project?
Pardon me, I didn't hear the first part of that.
Are those two different sections of a project?
Uh, y- yes, the, uh, the subsoil placement in my mind is typically, is something that's typically done with equipment and the topsoil is something that's more done, is more handwork.
So your opinion, and, and you drafted these, is that the anticipation, uh, what was anticipated in the original contract was not topsoil, is that correct?
That's my, that's my recollection, yes, ma'am.
I think, does anybody have any questions for Alan?
It says, it just says future new lawn area and earthwork and grading is in contract, grass seed not in. I understand the grass seed not in the new contract, but in the old contract, it says future new lawn area, which to me should have been done in the contract, the first contract, cause subsoil is already there.
Alan, could you hear that?
Uh, it's sort of, um, um, I think the, the way I understood the, the question was talking about, um, that the landscaping was, was the question related to thinking that the, the, the subsoil placement was in the original contract and the topsoil as well?
The new lawn, the new lawn area, the future new lawn area, earthwork and grading is in contract, grass seed not in contract. So the contract that was signed and on A2, 10-31, 2016, it says future new lawn area, earthwork and grading is in the contract.
Sir, if you have me, you have me at a little bit of a disadvantage because I don't have those, those documents here at home with me. I don't, I don't recall topsoil being mentioned in the October, um, contract. Is, uh, is, is there any reference to that in the, in the, in the October documents?
No, sir, it, it's, um, earthwork and grading, grass i- is in contract, grass and seed is not in and provide positive drainage. seed is not in, and provide positive drainage. My understanding of what you told us initially was that what you anticipated and discussed with the contractor was that earthwork and grading was for positive drainage, it was subsoil.
That's my recollection, Ms. Ledbetter, is that the intent of the original October contract was for, was for the, the subsoil and the placement of the subsoil, and placement of the subsoil in such manner that we wouldn't have pond and water until such time as the landscaping was complete. Um, that's what, I, I don't recall the October contract mentioning the placement of topsoil. Uh, but, um, that's, that, that is, that's my recollection, ma'am. Yes.
I think that's everything. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we're back on number seventeen, the approval of beautification project landscaping. What are your wishes?
Can we get more, I mean, could we get something in writing that's got more clarification of this and maybe vote on this at a later date till we have more time to review it more?
You most certainly can, but you realize that we'll not be finished by October.
I mean, I'm just afraid to do anything with, with so much uncertainty.
If we don't accept, we have to reject, correct? I move we reject the bid.
I'll second it.
Motion to reject and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Eight, ten, nine, four, one, eight.
Can we get Alan Hill to come up pretty quick to meet with the building committee to clarify this?
Okay.
Is that all right with the building committee?
It's all right with me.
The only problem I have with it is, is, I mean, it's all good except for the part there of the clarification on whether it was there or not in the first bid, because, you know, what it says is, it calls for everything. It doesn't say topsoil. It says new lawn with everything, you know, except for the seed and the fertilizer, you know, so.
Okay, moving back down to number nineteen, solid waste.
Um, got information back from Jackie. And, um, the cost is eighteen thousand dollars plus labor. But Jackie said it should not exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Total?
Total, yes. Um, it is not under warranty. Uh, the warranty has just expired, but the company, I mean, it's going to, life is to fix it because I reckon it just broke the frame, is that right, or something? But the company is going to pay for half that. This is Jackie's half to, to get it fixed.
Will they guarantee that?
What did it say, or they don't know when they can do it?
Um, just come out here.
I read that in there.
Wonder if there'll be a guarantee on their work for so long?
I'm sure there, it doesn't say, well, it could be in this quote letter that we don't have a copy of, it may be where it's at.
You hate to pay that much money in a hurry and break the next day to use it, you know?
Sure, there's a, some type of warranty. So I move that we declare an emergency and allow solid waste to repair.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Benny?
Has, um, I guess that'd be a question for the director, but has he, uh, you know, has he talked to anybody else about fixing the thing?
Yeah, he's talked to, um, according to this, Mountain Farm, Tri-County Equipment and Stowers Machine, Stowers was the only one that could get to it. Mountain Farm International, Tri-County Equipment, Stowers Machine.
Well, Mountain Farm and Tri-County, they wouldn't repair it anyway.
I don't think they, they may not have the capability to do it.
They, Tri-County would send it to, uh, a machine shop across town there. I don't know who does plateau or, or Mountain Farm, but, but they.
Well, a lot of them are not allowed to do this on this type of equipment, you know, you can't just get anybody to weld that thing for the liability.
Well, it's just a, it's a backhoe, isn't it?
I know, but it's still covered in the liability cost.
How much was it costing them to rent one weekly?
Six hundred, twenty-one hundred dollars a month.
Twenty-one hundred a month.
So every day we put it off, it's called the money.
And what was the cost on it again?
Uh, eighteen thousand plus labor, not exceed twenty-two thousand.
And our share is half of that?
No, that's, that's Jackie's share there, that's solid waste share there, and then the, um, the company's family.
Pretty expensive to weld, forty-four thousand dollars weld.
Well, I don't know what all they done to it.
You may have to completely disassemble it to weld it too.
Well, they may have to, yeah, they may have to. About two hundred bucks an hour.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Jeff?
Against.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Eight, four, one, eight, one against, motion passes.
Okay, Larry, down to the resolutions on the money.
Okay, uh, I believe the first one you have is the set in the tax levy, the very first page, which shows our tax rates remain the same at one dollar ninety-eight thirty-nine. Uh, general fund will give one point five eight eight nine, solid waste, point thirteen, general purpose school is point two three five zero, and general debt service is point zero three, which totals one point nine eight three nine.
I move we passes.
We have a motion to adopt that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
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 Jim?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Nate?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Nine, four, one, absent, motion passes. Uh, next is the county general fund.
Um, if you, we took several months and weeks to, to work this up, um, I'll just give you a couple of, some of the pages that I want to be on. Our total, uh, expected revenue for next fiscal year is nine million, one forty-six, five twelve. Our ex, estimated expenditures is, make sure I get this right, nine million, one thirty, five seventy-five, which if you do the subtraction, we're going to estimate it will be sixteen thousand dollars for the bid. That's in a perfect world.
So protection is to complete the budget in the black?
Nearly sixteen thousand dollars at, at present time.
By the way, uh, I want to commend the commission for working diligently hard on this. I know that was one of the goals that they had in mind, was to, uh, finish a budget that was not in the red, that was in the black, and, uh, they, they cut some purse strings to do it, but, uh, through diligent work, uh, that, that's been accomplished. What are your wishes on the county general fund?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, I have, uh, have a motion and a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, where the fact is that, as all the people know, there's no tax increase in the balance budget, plus.
Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one.
Nine, four, one, absent, that passes. Next is our solid waste, Fentress County Solid Waste, uh, Fund.
Estimated revenues for the year will be one million, six hundred nine thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars. Estimated expenditures is one million, five hundred eighty-three thousand, eighty-six dollars. Difference of gaining twenty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars in the black.
Twenty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty in the black. What are your wishes?
Make a motion to excel.
Motion to, uh, accept, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Barred discussion, roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion passes. Uh, next, the Drug Fund.
Um, the Drug Fund is just a, a guess. I mean, we don't know what may happen through the year, what, you know, all the things that happen, but projected revenue is fifty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. Total expenditures estimated is eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which would be lowering the fund balance by thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, which, uh, would end at forty-seven, four-eight.
I'll entertain a motion from the Drug Fund.
So move.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Benny, could you do the highlight?
Jeff?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Motion passes. Uh, next is the Highway Department and Public Works Fund.
I got a question. Marsha, does this have the, um, projected revenue that the improved act might bring in? This does?
I think she did.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I'm sure it does. Uh, total estimated revenue is three million, twenty-five thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars. three million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, which would lower their fund balance by two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, which with estimated fund balance would be two hundred and twenty thousand, one fifty-eight.
What are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Nine, four, one, absent, motion carries. Uh, next will be the, uh, Central Cafeteria Fund.
Uh, estimated revenue is one million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand. Expenditures, one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is depleting their fund balance by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, bringing their balance to five forty-eight, six thirty-five.
What are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Move to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Motion passes. Next is the Debt Service.
Uh, estimated revenue is five hundred, nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Expenditures is six hundred, eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, which will estimated lower the fund balance by a hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, ending fund balance to two million, three hundred, four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll entertain a motion for the Debt Service.
Go move.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Nine, four, one, absent, motion carries. Uh, next will be the, uh, Central Cafeteria Fund.
Uh, estimated revenue is one million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand. Expenditures, one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is depleting their fund balance by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, bringing their balance to five forty-eight, six thirty-five.
What are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Move to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Jim?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Motion passes. Uh, number twenty-two, consideration of a resolution to oh, one seven dash nineteen, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Fentress County for the year beginning July first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
That's all those budgets summed up in two pages, or three pages.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, eight.
Nine, four, one, absent, motion carries. Uh, number twenty-two, consideration of a resolution to oh, one seven dash nineteen, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Fentress County for the year beginning July first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
That's all those budgets summed up in two pages, or three pages.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jakey?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Don?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Mary?
Um, this is what we done last year, it's called the tax anticipation note loan. Um, what we, what we want to do, if we have to, you know, just to give us the opportunity to do it, um, we can actually borrow money from debt service and move it into county general to help pay the payment on the justice center. And then all we've got to do is make sure we move that money back before the fiscal year ends. Um, one of the main reasons why we like doing this is not to put a burden on county general fund, um, because we have to operate from February to February on our tax base. Um, debt service gets very little tax base from us, but it's very healthy. So this is legal that, uh, we have to give Marsha the authorization in order to ask for this, and this is the same thing we done last year.
And plus, there's no interest.
Correct. We're borrowing from ourselves.
So move.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Four.
Ray.
Four.
Nine four one, absent, motion carries. Uh, next is, uh, consideration of giving the Jesse Law, uh, Office Authority to represent Fentress County in a civil suit against those legally responsible for the wrongful distribution of opioids in Fentress County and the damages caused thereby. Leslie, I'm gonna let you handle that one in the work session, I got it all turned around.
Just flip the switch on top, it should be, pull it back towards me, there you go.
Thank you. Um, we were contacted by the Jesse and Jesse Law Firm up in East Tennessee. They had had some success in the state of West Virginia with lawsuits, uh, against the opioid wholesale distributors, not necessarily manufacturers and not the prescribers, but the wholesale distributors who are by federal law required to provide data county per county in each state in the nation. Um, the number of opioid prescriptions that enter into or are written for persons in that county, either by the doctors, the pain clinics, uh, any prescriber, or are sold in pharmacies. They have not, I think in the past four years that they've been under a requirement to do so, they've not provided that information to the DEA, and the theory is that if that had been done, the DEA would know more where to focus their efforts, and that has caused us even further harm. Um, that's the legal theory behind that. Well, they had some success in another, in other states, and they're trying it now in Tennessee and in Kentucky to determine if, um, we have any claims against these wholesalers, the sellers. And in doing so, they have filed suit individually, county per county versus the wholesalers, not in a class action suit, and nothing like in the tobacco settlement where the counties didn't see the distribution of those funds in the end. Um, they have a, a pretty standard contract, it's almost identical to the one that I have, except that they've gone even further to say that any discretionary cost that would be taxed against the client, meaning if you had to pay an expert witness or somebody to come in and expense wise, they would, uh, eat all that expense in the end of this versus bill it out to us if there was no recovery. Now, if you get a million dollars, they'll take out the five thousand, they pay their expert out of that, but if, it is truly a, if we don't get it, you don't owe us anything contract. Um, and the reason is because they know counties are poor and they're broke, and the poorest, brokest ones are the one with the worst opioid problems. Therefore, um, this allows them to represent us. Uh, Campbell County's on board, I believe, Claiborne, they're working on several in the eighth district, eighth judicial district, and almost all of the upper East Tennessee counties where there's been a lot of trafficking in and out from other states. But if y'all want to try this, go for it, and if you don't, don't.
But they will in effect, uh, represent Fentress County and with no cost, Fentress County, uh, anything they recover, we will get a percentage of that as we'll split it with them.
They take thirty-three percent, which is standard state of Tennessee.
They get one-third, we get one, two-thirds.
I'll make a motion, we follow through with that.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
I will say this, even if we don't get a penny out of it, it sends a message that we care, that, that it's not much we can do, but try.
Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Ray.
Four.
Okay, motion, uh, approved. Uh, number twenty-six, Center for Self-Governance, uh, Pastor Roger Burks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commission, appreciate the opportunity to come. In time past, we've been using the, uh, courthouse for the classes, not the actual meetings, but the classes, and, uh, apparently there's been a little bit of an issue. But I'd like to explain a little bit something about Center for Self-Governance, and in Fentress County, the group is called Keep the Republic. I believe that each one of us sitting here realizes the sovereignty of this nation is truly, uh, challenged, we're, we're in a lot of trouble, and one reason we are is because a key component to the republic that we live in is not operation, and that component that's not working is the citizens. And many times you will even hear our leadership call this nation a democracy, which is, it is not. As we quoted our, our, our pledge allegiance to the flag, it reminds us that we are a republic. If I could just share just for a moment, if, if we were a democracy, this would play out this way. You guys are totally responsible three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and the citizens, like, like myself, is, is only there to help one time, and that's when we vote. Well, republic is a little bit different. I recall when, when our founders framed this, and as Mr. Franklin, one of, one of the framers had left, he was asked by a lady who was a citizen by the name of Ms. Powell, and she asked Mr. Franklin, she said, "Mr. Franklin, what kind of government have you left us with?" And he said, "A republic if you can keep it." And what that requires, this was a brand-new concept, and it required that not only as elected representatives work three hundred and sixty-five days, but the citizens also must work three hundred and sixty-five days. Without that, you don't have a republic, and you will quickly slide in to a democracy. So this group is a civil, it's a civil group that is teaching, educating, informing on how government works, and our job as citizens is not to work against you, but to come and work with you. First of all, we learn terminology, and I'll not share that with you, but the second phase, and, and some of you have even been in the process and been interviewed by a few of those that, that are in the group, is to build a relationship with you, not work against you, but work with you. And a lot of times, opportunity's not there on a local level, but it's always there on a state level. That's why I've worked with, uh, Representative Kiesling, Representative Wendell, and also Senator, uh, Yeager. This is not affiliated with any party, Democrat, Republican, or Tea Party. This is totally for the citizens, and it's there to, it, it is there to come in and to help you to do the job that, that you have been elected to do. Even when we can't work together, there's still a relationship that you have with the citizens, and that's, that is the thing that has been, been lacking in America for quite some time. And this group i- is, is working not only in Tennessee, but other states. The, the gentleman that comes and, and teaches these classes, there's five levels, and, uh, we've completed two, getting ready to have level three. Uh, he travels all over the state, or all over the nation, and he, and he, uh, his home domicile is in Washington State, so he, he travels quite a distance. We love the opportunity to meet here at the courthouse when he comes. It's just a lot easier and much more convenient. But I'm gonna tell you, whether you choose to allow us to continue to do that or not, it's not gonna be any hard feelings. You're not gonna hear me out here slandering your name. We will continue to work because I live in this county, and I love this county, and I'm gonna do what I can do to make Fentress County the best that Fentress County can be, and that's working alongside with you, not against you. So whatever you decide tonight, whether you decide to continue to let us use the facilities or not, we're gonna continue to work, but I would hope that you would work with us also in providing us a place to have these classes. And over the last year, he's been here twice. Obviously, I would like to see that increase, but it's not that we're meeting weekly or monthly, uh, it's been twice, and I think we use the facilities those two different times, three times that he was here. So it's not a lot, but I would appreciate it, for your consideration, to allow us to continue to meet here at the courthouse, and it's a four-hour class, each one.
Uh, Rogers, I told you, and, uh, told Rod Williams as well, you know, I've had people come into my office, uh, that, um, I, I guess their biggest concern was that we're having the classes and, and we're charging for the classes, and as I told you, we, I had people from two or three different organizations within the county and county government, uh, as well as, uh, members from both Democratic and Republican parties. And, uh, you know, when they expressed that concern, uh, you know, at that point in time, I asked that y'all try to meet somewhere else, um, you know, uh, it just that the, the number of complaints got so large that I had to, had to do something to address it.
And, and I can appreciate that, and I, my thinking, or, or at least I, I really hope, that they just don't understand what the group is doing. This is not about building the Republican Party or the Democratic Party, it has nothing to do with any parties. It, it has all about, everything to do with educating citizens to come alongside and, and, uh, and help you. Because most of the time, when you hear from citizens, you'd rather not answer your phone, because it's usually complaints. Well, that's not what this is about. We're not gonna agree on every issue, and that's fine. If, if Kelly, Representative Kiesling, were still here, we didn't agree everything with, with what he voted, but I have a very good relationship with every one of our representatives here and, and represents Fentress County. So, uh, a- and again, it's all about educating, getting our people educated again about what made this country great. We have, this country is operated by constitutional law. Many other countries try to pattern their, their, their constitution according to ours. It's a wonderful document, but that document is worthless if the people are not also engaged in this process. That's why it's called a republic, not a democracy.
Well, and, and as you were, our, uh, ECD room, our, our conference room over there, uh, was a joint effort between, uh, not just the Chamber of Commerce, but several groups that, that helped, donated to, to, to build that up. Um, um, from private foundations, five oh one C threes and, and, and whatnot. Um, I don't know the total cost, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure in excess of ten thousand dollars went into that, and with, and I think most people who have complained, uh, asked what the intent of that was, and of course, the, the intent was to, for it to be used by, um, the different arms or branches of Fentress County Government. Uh, County Commission, uh, Planning Commission, um, ID Board, uh, you know, they used to be at the banks, they now meet, uh, in the ECD room. Um, you know, we meet there with UCHRA, UCDD, Economic Development, you know, all those groups, and, you know, one of the complaints is that this is not a branch of the government and that it did charge, so they've, they've kind of put the honest on me for two, two different things.
I understand, whatever, whatever, whatever you, the commission, whatever you decide, we're, we're, we're gonna abide to that without, without issue or calls, but I did want to take the opportunity to explain a little bit, and if you read the packet, uh, that, that I, that I gave you, it, it told just a little bit about...
Right.
Center for Self-Governance. So wha- whatever you decide, it, it's gonna be fine.
When, when your next meeting?
Our next meeting, we're actually, our, we are meeting, um, tomorrow, that quick, and Thursday, and, uh, and then nothing else is scheduled the rest of the year after that.
Roger, uh, you know, I'm off what you're doing a hundred percent, but the only thing, and I, the rest of the questions are too, is if you allow, you know, if we gotta have a, a median, or anybody for any reason can come say, "I want it." And somewhere there, uh, we gotta have some kind of a shut-off point. You know, I'm not, and I'm, you see what I'm saying? Anybody could come in for any obnoxious reason and request it, and you can't deny it, because it's, well, you gave it to them, you know, or you ran it to them, whatever. That's the little fine point in this day and time. Before this, it would be no problem, but I, I hope you see what, what Mike's talking about too, that any illegal, I mean, not illegal, but anybody for any stupid reason could come in there and demand it too.
Well, I understand. I understand whatever, whatever decision you make, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and if that's what you choose, then, then, uh, that, that's gonna be, that's gonna be fine, so it's...
How many people, Ben, ten?
Probably...
I mean, I know you want it to be more.
I, I'm guessing ten, no, probably no more than fifteen, yeah, somewhere in there.
From, are, are they from this, this area out here, or from...
They are from Fentress County. And, and, and actually, just to clarify, the, the Fentress County group, we don't charge, we're not charging anything. This is, this is Center for Self-Governance, uh, to help pay for the speaker that's traveling, and when he has to stay, then we pay him out of our own pocket for him, him to stay. So in this, you're, you're, you're gaining, you're gaining, uh, um, an education, you get a workbook, and also, I want you to know that the first three levels is the only time that we meet face-to-face. The last two levels are available online, so it's only the first three levels that even sit down and have the meeting, and then this group meets, we meet, uh, once a month, uh, sit-down meeting, and, and also once a month, a teleconference, and we do this at a, at a different place. Our meetings are not here, it's just the class that, that was taking place here.
Leslie, do you have anything to add from a legal standpoint or anything?
Um, just what we talked about when we ran by, if you open it up to one essentially, um, I know, but they don't claim to be, I guess, a political party, but maybe a political group, there's other political groups, um, that may not share values in Fentress County could very well demand, and I, I, the only thing is, you make it, if you open it up to one, and you don't open it up to others that have issues, then ACLU's gonna be knocking on the doors.
But it's not a political group, it's a civil...
I, I mean, just, I think that's probably left up to interpretation of people who do that kind of thing, but you don't have political affiliation to any one party, I guess, but...
I'd like to say thank you for just your care for the county and everything you're doing, but at the same time, I hope you understand, we've got to, we've gotta protect the county against lawsuits and, and, you know, just liability of it. You know, if you let one group use it, and then you refuse another group because you just don't agree with them, you know, you just open yourself up for, for all that mess, and, and unfortunately, that's just where we live in now.
Yeah, we sure don't want somebody to preach hate and division...
No.
...inside this courthouse.
No.
Well, I understand, what, whatever you decide to do, we're, we're going to, we're gonna abide by that, obviously, but, but I do want you to know, it is, it is a group that is gonna be there to help you. It, in, in whatever way, because if we don't, we don't do something, we're, we are gonna lose, we're gonna lose our republic, and I believe everyone sitting here, if we're honest with ourselves, we know that this nation is in terrible trouble, and until the citizens begin to be the citizens that we used to be, nothing is gonna change. We're, we're demanding, today, we're demanding and asking that you, that, that, that you provide every aspect of governance for us, and that we do nothing except vote, and that's not being fair to you. For this republic to work, we have to be involved, and then, then it will begin to operate again as it, as it should, as it should be operating.
Roger, I appreciate you coming out here... Roger, I appreciate you coming out here, uh, and, uh, your expression, uh, and explanation of, of what y'all are doing, uh, and as always, you know, I've always had a very high regard and high respect for everything that you do, I know that it's always good intention and, and, and the highest moral purpose, you know, it's just, uh, you know, like Leslie said, puts us in a hard spot, and, um, you know, it's, um, up to wishes of this commission, but, um, you know, I, I, you, you, you got the history of, of doing some great work throughout the county, and we really respect you for all that you do.
Well, thank you.
Did you say you had a meeting, that, two meetings this week?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to allow them to go ahead and finish the classes that they have scheduled here, and, um, we, uh, we developed some rules or guidelines to go by for the use of that room, um...
I think you're gonna have to do that in one way or the other.
I guess, I guess that's, that's my motion.
I'll say it in a second.
Maybe not just that room, but these grounds.
I think they're stoned from, I won't say the eighties, but don't hold me to that, that say, you know, that's why the true politically named parties, whether you put a name to it or not, meet at other places, just because this building was like a hundred-foot buffer, whether it's a voting party, or if it's sponsored by one of those, that it's a, a secondary group of that party, they've not been allowed to meet for that purpose.
And, and if even, if, if needed, Jeff, I will even help write those, those policies. I'd be more than happy to, to help whoever, whatever your guidelines are, to be, help, e- help write the policies to, to, um, to help alleviate this problem. And if you choose to do this, because it has caught us in a little bit of a bind also, but, but we do have backup plans, but I, I will offer my help if the commission wants it, in developing the policy for, for the use of the facilities. I have policies at my church that, that I have written.
They have a motion in several seconds, uh, to permit them to complete the, uh, scheduled classes that they have, and then at that point in time, we will, uh, develop the policies and procedures for...
I think C-CAS has a pretty good, uh, I'll say a generic form, I think y'all can look at it.
Are there any other discussion, roll call vote?
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
JP.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Mr.
Four.
Jeff.
Four. Against.
Four.
Thank you.
Eight, four, one against, one absent, motion passes. The other business, right before this commission.
Um, we only have one resolution.
That's, that's the only one we need, and they come back tomorrow.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned, second.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we wanna take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally-owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal housing lender member FDIC.